All right, let's go ahead and call this committee of the whole meeting to order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Do a roll call. We have three of our four council members present right now. We're missing Councilman Heeman. He'll be joining us shortly. So Travis, as far as the agenda, did ask that we move up the E six discussion. And we'll probably start with that. And then I know George was hoping to make it for E one, so we may end up having to push that back until he gets here. But let's start with E six. And Travis, you want to take it from there?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to add this to Calo agenda, just to advise Council of the two thousand and three Public Safety Aid, which was a money appropriated by the state legislature for public safety. See if Isani will be receiving approximately three hundred and seven thousand. Isani County, a little over a million. Million ninety-four thousand. They identified eligible uses for community violence, community engagement, mental health, crisis response, victim services, training programs, first responder wellness, equipment. Pay for, it can't be used for certain things. Those are what you can use, can't use it for other certain things. So I sat down with City Minister Wood and Finance Director Becker just last week with kind of figuring out a list of appropriate uses for that. As far as a lot of capital stuff that either stuff that we have on capital that has to be moved forward. Just for example, in our body worn camera system that we had is scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-nine. Which we're fine right now, but we found out last year because we bought WatchGuard, bought by Motorola. And they will fix our cameras. We've been sending them in. We have, I think, ten. And they can fix them, but if we need to buy a new one, or if they can't fix them, we can't replace them. So they've already became obsolete since two thousand and nineteen. Go figure. That in itself is, I don't think I actually put the numbers down what we have. Twenty twenty-nine is when that was scheduled to be up. So that's something that will have to move forward, whether we use this, whether we would have had this funding or not. You know, say we would have had to move it, twenty twenty-nine, it's not going to work. So that's just like an example of some of the programs that we identified as uses for that, as long as with some other wellness stuff and equipment pieces. So just wanted to lay that out there, just so you're aware that that's coming here at the end of the year. And that we're working, trying to identify some of those projects. You know, I think originally identified projects that were in excess of that dollar amount. So trying to figure out which ones would make the most sense for our community, for the police department. Which ones, like, I really envision a lot of, if we can do anything that's a force multiplier, right? If we can buy one piece of equipment that makes it so that two officers can do the same task that five, ten officers, right? So different type of technology type pieces that that would be nice to have to force multiply is kind of one of the big intents behind that legislative intent. Was to allow police departments to do more with less. And it's kind of the trend. We don't have a lot, so what can we do to make them more efficient and actually do better in their crime prevention? Actually, you know, catching crime, preventing crime, community outreach type stuff. So that's kind of some of the topics that over, the overtones of what we're looking for. So not looking for anything from council, just wanted to update as far as that's what we're working on. And obviously, we'll be pushing some of the stuff back through at some later date. I just wanted to give you a heads up before that later date comes and your, where this all come out of.
Sure. So it sounds like we don't have to use that in a certain amount of time, right? So I mean, you could say, okay, we're going to kind of earmark, I think the body cameras are eighty-three thousand, right? So I mean, can you say, okay, we're going to use that in twenty, you know, what year is it? Twenty twenty-five or something like that?
Right.
Because like you might not need them like right now, but you don't want to spend the money.
My thought process too, with the body cameras, have it there.
Yeah, right.
And there's going to be some leg, you know, you're talking months, right? So we can't go at the bare minimum, but there's going to be a timeframe really, hey, this, this has to happen. And then, you know, and then to keep, like, just for that example, keep getting quotes from that vendor to see, you know, how much are we increasing over every year, right? Because if it goes up ten percent a year, well, that might change our decision too. If it goes up five percent a year, then maybe not. You know, so I do agree, and that's kind of my thought process even on the body camera one is, we don't need them now, but I can tell you we're going to need them before twenty twenty-nine.
Right, and the radios, radios sounded like that was another one that was.
There's a few encrypted radios. We're up on some of them and some of them not. So, yeah, so there's some encryption stuff. So there's some of those pieces that we'd utilize right away and some not. You know, like, there's even the E O C equipment. You know, I applied for a grant this year. We did not get. I mean, that would be something, we would utilize that for some of the, to actually get, you know, we talked about that, I think, at a past meeting. You know, that's one of the other pieces is trying to actually have the functional E O C with the E O C equipment. That we don't have any funding for, right? So I mean, that would be a prime example of something that would be applicable for that.
Sure.
So I have a question quick, if that's okay, Travis.
Sure.
So you said that our body cameras, they were bought in two thousand and nineteen and they're already failing. Is there, is Motorola the only company that makes those, or is there another competitor? Or do we have any sort of way to get a guarantee on them? Because if you're talking only, they only last four years and they're eighty-three thousand dollars, that's twenty thousand dollars a year it's costing us. Is there any sort of guarantee we can get that it's not going to be obsolete or that the manufacturer will do something with us? Are we kind of, because it seems like they kind of have us by the, by the throat.
Looked at for the new, you know, because we can utilize the in, the in-car camera system that we have now, which is WatchGuard, is bought by Motorola. We can still utilize that because that's not failing and it still works. We won't be pushing that out till twenty twenty-nine when it would prepare, or look at how, or evaluate, reevaluate twenty twenty-nine. So they'd work interoperably with that. The new ones, from what I've seen, I haven't talked to them about that, I can ask that question, is five years. I mean, you can buy the five-year guarantee on that piece. There's other competitors, you know, we can look at Axon again. And Axon's about that price, around twenty to twenty-some thousand dollars a year for the rest of our life. They'll keep giving you new equipment, so they guarantee you new equipment.
So it's a lease?
It's, but they own all your data, right? So that when, let's say we're done with Axon, but we want to go with vendor X Y Z. Now we got to find somewhere, pay for, still have to pay Axon to store the data, if that makes sense. So the system we have now, we own the data. So let's just say we went to a different vendor, which we'll look at a different vendor too. It looks nice, just upgrade the body cameras because our squad cameras work and they're, it's interoperable. But I don't like the, some of those, like Axons, that their marketing is monthly subscription for the rest of forever. So they kind of have you because it costs a lot to alleviate from them. And a lot of, back when body cameras first got big, Axon was giving the bigger municipalities a really good front rate for that, knowing that they'd have them forever, right? So that's so, no matter what, I'd want to look at it in-house where we have our own server like we do now. Because, you know, if we went to a different company, we have our data. It's in, we own it, we have it.
How long do we have to keep that for?
I mean, depends, depends. There's statutory stuff on some of that. Some of it's forever. I mean, like, there's, if it's a homicide case, criminal sex case, there's certain stuff that we can't get rid of it. Officer, different officers use the force stuff, we have to keep it forever. Most of it is one, three, five years, and then auto purges after that. So some of it would drop off at five years, would be a lot of it. But there's still a lot of data within there. And that's just, it's just kind of a pain in the side to pay somebody else to store data for you. They're not even using their service for anymore.
Yeah, right.
But we'll look at it. I mean, I'll definitely, before we actually pull that pin, we're not just going to say we're going with that.
Okay.
It just, I did get the quotes from that, just to see what it costs. Because the county's upgrading their system for the same reason. Cambridge has that same system, but they didn't get into it till last year, so they're already on the newer system for the body cameras. It just, you know, you know, in any business, they keep selling stuff out to different people. You know, we went through WatchGuard, which bought by Motorola. Now, you'd assume that Motorola, being the company as big as they are, they're not going to sell again. But you can't really make those assumptions either, right? We do know five years is for sure. How long after that, who knows?
It's like a computer.
All right.
Six months after you buy it, it's basically obsolete.
Yeah, but I think they, they do it on purpose with this stuff.
Yeah.
So they can make more money because they know they're.
Computers though, because it's outdated, everything evolves every year.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty much industry standard as far as that cost, whether you buy the equipment. And then it, you know, I think we are on the short end of that stick, if that makes sense. When we got into WatchGuard, because they were out probably four years before then. So we kind of got in, but whether you go with them or any other vendor, you're about the same. Or if you go with one of the other subscription type vendors, they're usually a little bit more expensive. But you always get new technology all the time. But as far as dollars per cents, I think they're pretty applicable all across the board.
Yeah, camera technology hasn't changed much in the last five years. So I'm kind of surprised why they become outdated, other than forcing it to.
They become outdated because the company bought them, and I'm assuming they're just not manufacturing them.
Sure.
Right? So they'll fix them for us, but you know what it's like bringing an electronic device in to get fixed.
Yeah.
They don't like fixing a lot of stuff.
It's never the same either.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or anything with that?
I would, I still would rather not use that money toward for the E O C stuff or whatever that you were talking about personally. I think it's better suited to take items out of our budget so that we don't have to tax as much for it. If, and you know, does that make sense? I don't really think we need a command center. If something really goes that bad, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think we, and we've got, it sounds like we've got to deal with the county now too on that E O C, right?
Yeah, I mean, some of the stuff is, like any other grant funding, is supplanting is the issue, you know? And, and I might can probably talk a lot more to the supplanting issues on grant funding than I can. But as far as using that money just to take money away, it doesn't work.
Right, but I'm sure there's stuff in the capital improvement.
I mean, but you are kind of in a sense, because I mean, even if you're, if you have that budgeted for twenty twenty-nine and we don't have to have the money in twenty twenty-nine. So it's not as direct, but I mean, it will alleviate some.
There's some things we can, and that was one piece. There's some other pieces in there.
Okay. All right, sounds good. We'll move on, let's see, should we move on to E two then?
Cat discussion.
The cat discussion? Thanks Travis.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So there was a cat discussion at our last, oop, sorry, I get to the right page. At one of our last meetings and looking at whether we should regulate cats in general. Regulate by doing any, something with animal control. And when we looked at the table that was presented, that staff had collected and put together, it had showed that Cambridge did some animal control to manage nuisance cats. Ms. Strand had reached out to the city of Cambridge, and in fact, they do not. So that was not, not something that they were doing, and they were not aware, at least the staff we spoke to was not aware of any animal control. Because it took special regulations for them to do so. That's what she shared.
Well, how did we think that they did do it then?
So that was part of the table that one of Chief Meyer's staff put together. And I believe that it might be in their ordinance, but they're not actively doing it.
Okay, gotcha. How about like Woodbury? Because that was another one that we had saw was, was doing something about it.
I apologize, we did not reach out to talk to someone personally, but Woodbury.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, I mean, I guess I'd still like to maybe see if there's somebody out there doing it at least. And I mean, it says that they are, so I don't know if that'll be accurate or not, I guess either. But maybe I just give them a phone call and see what we can, see what we can figure out.
Now, how does that legally work if a cat's on your property and you catch it or do something with it? Does that, is that like a personal case then at that point, or?
I don't know.
I, I guess what's to keep people from doing it themselves? Is there anything in the law? I guess Travis would be the guy to ask that, but.
Yeah, we don't have anything within ordinance.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I mean, that complaint was, you know, the cats are coming over and getting in my trash.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's a nuisance for sure. I mean, it's.
I like the cats. They keep rodents away.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's some good, some good and some bad, for sure, right? But.
But everybody likes birds and they chase the birds away.
That's true too. Yeah, that's true.
I mean, there's, not necessarily, is it just cats getting in the garbage? It's raccoons.
Raccoons, yeah.
Ossoms. You know, I mean, that stuff is happening on a regular basis.
Nature baby.
So I, I think it's going to be a hard thing to find without being very costly
Yeah, yeah.
to the city and to taxpayers, plain and simple, you know?
I'd be interested to see if there is a company that, or maybe a city uses that would come in. And the only people that would have to pay for it is people that have animals that get caught. I mean, isn't that how we do dogs?
Yeah, we do use animal control for the dogs.
Okay, and the animal control won't do the cats?
No. We did, we did contact our animal control and they do not.
Okay.
And they were, we were told the same thing by them, that it required a specialized insurer that they do not hold.
Okay. I mean, it'd still be interesting to see what other cities are doing.
Yeah, I can't remember, yeah, I don't think we have the chart here on this one of what cities, no, we don't. But I know Woodbury was one of them for sure, but maybe we can go back and look at that graph and just, just maybe put some calls into those ones that are doing something, or say they're doing something about it and see if anybody actually is.
Sure. We'll go, staff will go through the list. And if any of the cities had said that they do something or do something if there's a problem, because I know there was one that was.
Even if they are, I don't know that we necessarily should, but I mean, at least we'd know if it was an option then.
It was Anoka.
Blaine, North Branch, St. Paul, Roseville, I believe, and St. Cloud and Woodbury.
We will further reach out, further research this, reach out to them. And then I'll also talk to the chief about if, by state statute, what happens if an animal. I know there are laws with dogs. I'm not sure if there's laws with cats going on to a different property.
Okay.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get back to E one here then. So we're going to do the sign ordinance zoning code, section sixteen, subdivision one through five discussion. So, and this was kind of something that I had asked to bring up. And, and, you know, we decided to kind of take it in pieces basically. And so what you have in front of you were, I think it was Stephanie had actually gone through, right? And kind of taken some of the changes that I had asked about and highlighted them. And then kind of had commented in, in that red text below the, the highlighted language. So, so yeah, I mean, I, my intention basically with bringing this up was just to say, okay, well, how do we, I mean, the sign ordinance, and I know Steve, you, you guys spent a ton of time putting it together in the past, haven't you?
Two or three years.
Yeah, yeah, right. So I mean, it is, you could really dig into it and get crazy. But I just wanted to look at it and say, okay, well, you know, how do we, how do we make it more business friendly? Make it less complicated and just, you know, that, that really is the goal. So, you know, how do we cut red tape on this kind of, kind of an issue? So, but, so if you're looking at subdivision two, D two, on that one, I had basically just asked, you know, on the secondary frontage, does it really matter which one is larger or not? You know what I mean? It's, is it really something that we need to, to have language in there, spelling that out?
It's just basically saying that you can't, one huge, humongous sign in one side. And it has to be appropriate size, match sizing. That's the way I read it.
Well, the way I read it is that you, if you had a secondary frontage and you wanted to have a larger sign on that side, you can't because it can only be as big as the sign on your primary frontage.
Then you just remove the side, primary and siding side. But some of the time, I don't even want to get into this, because you have no idea how much pain this is. It was three years of this. And I was, I was never against a lot of what was there.
Yeah.
The one that I was, that I was more dead set against was everybody running around stapling up signs on telephone poles and shoving in their little, like the campaign signs. And they sit there for six, eight months and never get picked up. Next thing you know, they're blowing around down the street.
Well, that's the thing is.
And I wasn't just like out in front of the building that your pizza place is at.
Yeah.
They had a sign out there that you could change the lettering on. That was one that they wanted dead set, they wanted removed. I didn't see that as a problem. It was a portable sign. It may sat there for six months, it may sat there for a month. It's, it's, it aids the business. They were talking about lettering, they were talking about writing, you know, with the soapstone on the windows. Big deal, it's her window. I don't care. It was, my biggest thing was, we did, didn't need a bunch of little signs just shoved in the, in the corner here and the corner there and all over the place. That was the only thing that I had a problem with, because nobody cleans that crap up. Generally, a business is going to be responsible enough to clean up their own signs. Because it's a bad image on them if they don't. A lot of these other signs are fly-by-niners, or just trying to grab somebody's attention. And believe you me, I see every sign that's stapled on a telephone pole when I'm driving down the road. It catches my eye for some reason. It just does. I think it's great advertisement, but you're going by it seventy miles an hour. You know, I don't really get to see what it all says, but it did catch my eye to see what's there. So, but that was, that was, at that time was what I was always against. The rest of them, I didn't care.
Yeah.
But I will tell you this, in the whole state of Hawaii, all the islands, they do not allow any signs. It's called sign pollution, and they do not have any lights, light pollution. All their streetlights are yellow, because they, it reflects, when they're up there looking at the telescope, looking at the stars, they can't see their stars. Do I agree with it? Not necessarily, but that's just the way it is. They, you can't drive down a highway and anywhere in Hawaii, there's no billboards. There's none of that. They don't allow it. I'm just, I'm just, I, I don't care. I'm just using this as a point. There's places that are a lot worse, more strict than, than we are.
Yeah, right.
And, but, I guess within reason with the sign, you know? I mean, look at, look at all the older businesses. I mean, there was businesses in Cambridge way back when I was a kid. You know, Coca-Cola was painting on the whole side of the building. That was cool, nostalgic.
Yeah, right.
That, to me, is appealing. I mean, as long as we have a sign that isn't offensive to anybody or using, you know, vulgarity or anything like that. Because we do, I don't care. We do have kids in town. I could care less about half of this. I'll be honest with you.
I agree with Steve on, on, you know, the smaller signs being a nuisance and not being picked up. And, you know, we could trim this down to, you know, signs that are out more than X amount of time. You know, then we have a problem with them. As far as signs though, I don't think we should hold up capitalism. I think we should be business friendly, let these businesses draw on as many people as they can through signage, as long as it's, you know.
One of the things was, and sorry, sorry, Mr. Heeman, I didn't mean to interrupt you. One of the things was with that portable sign that you can change the lettering on. I think there was a, a permit fee for X amount of time. I don't see a problem with that, because then you're, you're paying for that to be there. You should then have the hundred percent right to do it. As long as you're, you're, you're doing your diligence and taking care of it, and then now you become more responsible with it. I just think a lot of these signs, you know, storm damage, called X Y Z siding and roofing. I, those people, when a storm comes through, they're all just shoving signs wherever, whenever they can.
Yeah, and see, that's the kind of stuff, that drives me nuts too, is it's like you don't have permission to put a sign there. It's not your spot to put a sign. It's, so I don't intend on bringing up really any of that kind of stuff for the, that you just mentioned.
And I'll be honest with you, as far as I'm concerned, make it plain and simple, as long as we can come up with a reasonable, you know, like you were talking about the two signs.
Yeah, right.
You know what? Say, it doesn't have to be one size or the other. Just, it can't be more than, you know, four by eight or something, you know? It's just, I'm just throwing numbers. It's not what I'm saying. But, you know, say, let's limit it to this. I mean, if you got a hundred-foot square wall and windows in it, and then you're trying to cover up stuff in it, I just, that's the only thing that I would, would only say on it. I mean, it just needs to be done correctly. I don't want to use the word politically, but you know, it's probably the better choice of words. So that they're not putting vulgarity or anything like that, or anything like that on there. That would be my only concern. I could care less if the business wants the soapstone or windows. That catches a lot of attention. I, and that nostalgia of the signs, I think, is huge. This isn't, this isn't an older city. It's not like it was just built in, you know, nineteen eighty.
Is there any examples you can come up with, you don't have to name names, but of businesses that are possibly in your eye abusing signage? Either, either can I?
No, I, I just, I'm just saying is, is, you need to, you need to put parameters. Because soon as you don't set a parameter, it's like a child. You give them a foot, they'll take three feet. You have, you have to set that parameter. This is what you got, and that's what, then that's holds everybody to that standard. Not just one individual, but everybody. You know, maybe the size of the sign should go by how many square foot that wall is. And use appropriate ratio to say, you know, two-thirds of the size of that square footage or. I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't want you to think I'm putting words, I'm just saying, to make it appropriate sizing. And then everybody has to follow that standard. It's been brought up many times about the Highway sixty-five corridor. You know what? I didn't care, I could care less. If a business wants to paint their building blue and pink, that's, that's their company's business colors, then they should have that right. But I also would like to see those signs look semi-decent. I don't want to see somebody take a four by eight sheet of plywood and, and paint their name on it. That looks very tacky.
I, I think businesses are, are better disciplined than that. Maybe somebody brand new is just starting out, and hopefully they make enough money within a couple months.
I'll make, I think I've made this confession before, but I've done that.
Right, I mean, I.
And it was one of the most effective signs I ever did, because it caught a lot of attention.
Doubt it.
But I just saying is, is, I mean, you have to set a parameter and you hold everybody to that standard, not just one or the other.
So, so for D two, that's where we're at, subdivision two, D two? I mean, I guess I don't really care which size has, which, which side has signs. So what are you trying to do with that?
I'm just trying to say, you know, who cares?
Right.
Can we just get rid of it? I mean, so a lot of this stuff is only going to apply, of course, to city streets. Because we have a lot of, you know, the state obviously has the highway runs through, so when there's going to be requirements that the state has, and there's going to be requirements that the county has that we don't have control over. But what we can control, we should try to at least make it simple for people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why the secondary side has to be smaller than the primary side sign. That doesn't make much sense. If that's, if somebody wants the same size sign or, as long as it's within the rest of the sign guidelines, who really cares?
Right, yeah.
I, I mean, I would be okay with striking that one.
I am too.
I don't see any situation where that would hinder anybody, as long as they fit the rest of the sign ordinance with those. And then if you do, look at subdivision five, A four, it's kind of the same thing.
Can, sorry, I just want to clarify. So just to be clear, right now, we do require the building frontage to have a sign. So would it be, would it make sense for us to just remove that last line, additional signage located on secondary frontage shall not exceed? Because the first part really does allow for more signage on the building. So it does allow for two frontages to have signage versus our general sign allowance, which is just one on the front of the building. So does that make sense?
That makes sense.
So if we just take that last sentence off, or just, it's still the same percentage of sign allowed on a building. It just allows it to be on more than one side.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sounds good to me.
So then subdivision five, A four, it's basically the same thing. Couldn't we just strike that one? Or strike maybe the which shall not exceed eighty percent?
Yeah, right. I mean, if, so I mean, how is the sign, and I think maybe that's the next section there. And I was on number five, and I was trying to figure out, well, what is, what is that actually talking about there? So, but I'm assuming that's the, the calculation for the signage that you're permitted?
Yes.
In that table? Okay. So I'm going to have to ask you guys to explain that to me. But, but, I mean, why can't they use a hundred percent of what they're allocated on, however they best, you know, see fit, I guess would be.
One of the reasons for, sorry, going back to, yeah, that doesn't matter. Sorry, I was thinking about the Pylons, Pylon signs, and the dynamic sign has the same percentage. But there's a reason for that one, so this one's different.
I mean, if they're allotted so much space, I mean, who cares how you use it really, I guess, on that, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you know, when we went over all the signage, none of them were here. They weren't. It was a nightmare.
Or better set now.
Well, not necessarily, but, like I'm, like I'm just saying, this, this could be a year-long, two-year-long, three-long discussion.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, I mean, we're not.
That's, back then, I just wanted to simplify it. It was even brought up in industrial park, and I fought about it. An industrial park is an industrial park is an industrial park. If you have semi-trailers in an industrial park, you're going to have semi-trailers in an industrial park. You're not allowing residents to be in there. Who cares?
I agree.
Mayor and Council, unfortunately, as Lindian stated, we're not able to say why things were chosen. If it doesn't make sense to us now, I think we should evaluate it as we are here now. Because some of these things within the section of code is.
I will tell you, it was, there was a certain person, I'm not naming names, that wanted it that way, and that's all I'm going to say. I, I will tell you, it was, there was a certain person, I'm not naming names, that wanted it that way, and that's all I'm gonna say.
We know.
They, that, that person had numerous people backing that, so it was voted that way. So, eh, I, to me, yes, I, 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 there's a lot of times I believe in what Mayor Gordon says about capitalism. For businesses, a hundred percent. There's certain things, like I said, we need to. Set a standard that everybody has to follow, not just one individual, or that individual, or this individual. You need to set everything so it's standard, so it's standard across the board for everybody. I, I'll be honest with you, whatever you guys decide at this, I don't care, because I've been beat to death with this thing.
Right. So.
So for that. For subdivision five, um, A four. Are we leaving in additional wall signage may be permitted on a secondary frontage, because we want that to be allowed?
Yes.
So I'm just taking off which, yes, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, thank you.
So, obviously, we're not gonna get through all this, so we'll work on this over multiple meetings until we have all the verbiage?
Yeah, I mean, our goal today is to get through section five.
Okay.
So, and then we'll.
Sounds good.
Yeah, but if, if we get a little late here, then we'll call it, and we'll move that to the next one.
There, there is some obvious things that they're in there, like overhanging signs over the sidewalks. They have to meet certain requirements, so people aren't hitting their heads on them, or a truck comes through and hits them. That I totally understand. Uh, just for example. Subdivision five, number seven, non-residential multi-story buildings. Wall signs shall be located in the below, the, below the bottom of the second story. I, I, I'm, I'm just confused, that is.
I think that one in particular is, like, if you had, like, let's say if that building across from Mobile, that's gonna be that apartment building. If that had residential, or, uh, uh, on top and commercial underneath, like it was originally kind of, you know, planned for. Then they would say, okay, that, that commercial has to, that signage has to stay below the second level. Well, they can kind of understand, it's not, but we don't have, like, Trump, Trump Tower here, where it says Trump on the top, or something like that, you know what I mean?
That's, I'm just saying, some of these things, I mean, that, that only makes common sense. If you own that building, you're not gonna, you're not, you, you're gonna rent the upstairs out to people. You really don't want to put a sign in their rental unit.
Just higher visibility, though.
It's, it's higher visibility, but if I'm paying you. Eighteen hundred dollars a month to rent this apartment, I don't want a flipping sign, neon sign hanging out in front of my window.
And this, but this does allow for you to put the sign there, it just only allows for the primary occupant to put the sign up at the very top of the tower, or whatever you wanna call it.
So then, you know, you could basically, you know, as far as I'm concerned, strike it.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, is if it's allowed, but only for the primary occupant, why can't we just make it, you can put whatever signage you want up there, you know?
I don't know, I was thinking the boutique here that used to be R and R Shoes. That's the first thing that comes to my mind, when you're driving down the street, they can move their boutique sign all the way up at the top, so you could see it more. I don't, I don't know if that's good or bad, I think that's what it's more or less.
But if you go back into the, back into the fifties and sixties. That's the standard.
Yeah, to have them high, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I think that's, I don't, I don't know, I don't see if we'd.
I just know I wouldn't want to rent the unit that's next to that light, you know, apartment, whatever.
Yeah.
Cause I don't need all that extra light blinking and flashing in my room, but that's me personally.
Yeah.
So, you know, so number seven, as far as I'm concerned, you can scratch that, you know? The minimum spacing between projecting signs is twenty feet.
And see, that, that one there.
I just want to clarify, we are striking seven.
I don't know, I just don't want to come into a situation where it's an issue. I don't know if we would, but.
Well, are, are we striking seven?
That's what they're talking about, unless, do you have a problem with it, or what are you thinking?
Not at all, I mean, if we're keeping it, I'd like to change the wording, like, primary occupant, if it's a bigger office building in the future, it means. Only the primary could have their name up there.
That's what I'm saying, right, I mean, I think more, more than one could fit up there, if it's, you know, but if we just strike it, that accomplishes the same goal, I guess.
Yeah, but then, yeah, I suppose then again, just let people do what they want with their building.
We will make sure the, all of these changes regarding buildings are reviewed by the building official also, to make sure that we're following other codes that we may not be aware of.
Okay. So, um.
Yeah, it's fine, strike it.
And then, but on, on section five there, if we can go back to that, so, so that is the formula for how. The allowable signage space is calculated, right, so. Yeah, I was just confused by what it was really trying to, so I mean, what does that actually mean, like, it's, okay, zoning district B one is, square feet of sign area is one.
So for every linear square foot of the building, one square foot, or linear foot of the building. One square foot is allowed, up to three hundred square feet.
Okay.
Okay, and then sixty-five overlay, so for every linear foot, it's two and a half.
Yeah, it's larger.
Square feet.
Okay, alright.
Does that seem to be, is it, does anybody know if that's standard, or, I mean, I would assume it's probably fairly.
It would probably be pretty standard, though I just. I mean, probably, I'd be, be willing to bet that that's pretty standard, so, like I said. Your brain was numb after that, we finally got the.
Does, does anybody know if anybody's complained about not being able to put up a big enough sign? Have you guys heard of any of that in the last?
No, nothing that's out of our requirements, I guess.
Then it's probably not.
The only one is a temporary sign, which we'll get to eventually.
Okay, so it's probably fine. But it is kind of confusing.
Yeah, it's confusing, yeah.
It makes sense when you get it explained to you, but is there any way to clean that up?
Well, I mean, I guess maybe it makes sense, now that.
It, it does, but you gotta, you need the explanation before it makes sense.
But most people are gonna know that, when they, when they come in for, apply for the sign permits and stuff, they'll be, they'll understand.
That we get a lot of sign companies now, so they know they're used to following these.
If it, it would make a lot more sense if it said, like, square feet of sign area, and then one times one linear foot, or. One point five times one linear foot, or, you know, or if you just put that at the top of, you know, s- square feet of sign area per linear foot.
So you just put the equation for it.
Right above the table.
But if we put the equation actually in the.
Yeah, above the table, it just says, wall signs shall not exceed the number of square feet for every linear footage of building or unit wall in which the sign is to be located.
As she just pointed out, I, it, it rang to me that it, yes, it does.
Well, it does say that, but it doesn't really imply what the table is saying, you know what I mean?
I can try to clean up the language and bring it back to.
Or if we could just even add an equation in there, so it's like, one times one, or what Jimmy said, one ti- one point five times one linear foot equals how much square foot you can have.
Right, cause it never actually says, like, why that, you know, why is that number two point five, and this one's two, and, you know, it says the wall signs. Shall not exceed the number of square feet for every linear footage, so I mean, it is saying that, but I just think it's, it's not quite clear to. Imply that that's what the table is showing there, so. But I think, yeah, if we haven't had complaints about the size of the sign, I'm, I'm okay, leave it there, I just would, I just thought it was. If we can clean it up a little, so it makes more sense, that'd be better.
Five B three.
Yeah, and that one, actually, I, in my notes here, I'd actually commented on two, not three, so. I think the minimum spacing between projecting signs, twenty feet, you gotta have enough space between them, so you can drive by and see it, without blocking each other's signs, so. Actually, two was the one that I had, had mentioned in my notes here, the sign shall not project more than four feet from the wall. And somewhere else in the same, uh, ordinance, it says, like, two thirds of the sidewalk. I think in another section for a different type of sign. And that, to me, I, if you've got a bigger sidewalk, why not just go two thirds of the sidewalk, and then you can come further out from the wall with the projecting sign?
But then you're kind of limited on smaller sidewalks, I think the average sidewalk's what, probably four feet wide? Five foot, maybe?
You might be right about that, I guess, maybe, maybe I'm thinking about that wrong. See, I was thinking more like Main Street, where you've got, like, a eight, it's gotta be like an eight foot sidewalk, or something like that.
But the average sidewalk is a lot less.
Yeah.
Half that.
The two thirds of the sidewalk is for an awning, so.
That was a nine foot sidewalk?
Well, the two thirds of the sidewalk is the awning requirement, so it can't be more than two thirds of the.
That's in there in the, in the other section, yeah, right. So I guess.
Why is it, why is it four feet from the wall anyway? Isn't the, isn't the setback at least ten feet usually, so? I mean, that's the minimum usually with a business, isn't it?
It really depends on the business, I guess.
Have there been any that are closer to the road than ten foot? I mean, that seems really close, so a four foot sign still wouldn't be interrupting the road.
Yeah, it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the ones downtown.
And the sidewalk is.
Probably seven or eight, okay, it's just six, okay.
That's what I would guess, all of the ones in that district are allowed to be closer, yes.
I see what you're saying, I mean, if you just put up a strip mall, and you just happen to have a projecting sign off, or, you know, if it's a new building or something, I mean. Pizza Ranch maybe has a, like, up in Cambridge, maybe has a projecting sign coming off of the front of there, really, I'm trying to picture how that looks there.
I don't think so.
Wouldn't typically see that, that kind of a sign on a new, newer building, I guess, it'd be more like a Main Street type of scenario, but.
I mean, I, I don't see why, why can't they have a sign big enough to almost reach the road? It's not, you're not gonna have a, a semi driving on the sidewalk.
But we do have snowplows and stuff driving, so that's our consideration, I guess.
Bobcat's only seven feet tall. I don't know what the minimum.
I guess I was, really what I was looking maybe to do was just try to maximize it, so that if it was, you know. Four feet or two thirds of the sidewalk, whichever is more, is maybe.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So if the sidewalk is a skinnier sidewalk, then four feet is.
Yeah.
Fine, but if it's, if it's a bigger sidewalk, then go two thirds, so they can go out farther if they wanted to.
What do you think, George?
I agree.
Okay, four feet or two thirds, whatever is greater.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not much input on that one, it's.
Okay. And then, let's, how we do for time here? Let's give it another four minutes here, and then we'll.
Sounds good.
Then we'll go to the next one. Uh, so freestanding signs, so on C one there, uh, I just wanted to cut that restriction. I just, I feel like no business is gonna put up more signs than they need, I mean. We had, I think the only time that I've ever dealt with that was Dairy Queen, when they had to ask for special permission to put one up, because they only could get it, like, two hundred and.
Less because of its location on Highway sixty-five, so that's what.
So there, we're not gonna solve that problem necessarily, because we're on the state highway, but, uh, but I mean, if you did have that on a city road. I mean, three hundred feet, you know, I mean, if, if your lot is, I don't know, I mean, I just think, if somebody wants to put up more signage. As long as it's not interfering with traffic, why not let them?
Three hundred feet's pretty, that's, that's a big distance.
Yeah, that's a big distance.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe you want one on one corner, and you want one on another corner, right, yeah, right, so.
I want, oh yeah, line is on sixty-five too, so that's the same thing.
You still have all the rules as far as the right of way, it's not like you're getting rid of that, those type of requirements, so I mean. So yeah, I mean, I guess, I was just thinking, maybe we could just remove that part of the, that section.
I'm okay with that one, too.
I am too.
Okay.
So basically, every business could have two signs in their frontage, okay, just double checking, that's what it would allow then.
I mean, if, I mean, nobody's gonna spend, if they don't feel the need for it, nobody's gonna spend the kind of money it takes to put one of those signs up. You know what I mean, if they, if they don't think there's a need for it, so.
Did you have a problem with that one, Stephanie?
Well, I, my concern is on locations, for instance, like East Duell Mall, where there's multiple businesses, so now we would. Technically be opening the gates for six signs. Just, so just keeping that into consideration, because then there's no.
But that's a county road, isn't it?
It is, but we have other businesses, similar, Little North Boutique, they could have six signs in that.
See, that's what I'm saying, and nobody's gonna do that, because it's cost prohibitive to do it, I mean, they could do it, but, and.
I mean, in a.
You have to have, you're, you're gonna want to have them far enough apart to where you can actually see the sign, too, so. You're not gonna want to crowd your own signs out with putting too many there, so. I just think it kind of regulates itself.
What about a situation where, like, uh, the mall that you're in, there's six businesses there?
That's what she's talking about.
Yeah, there's already a sign there, but what if each individual business wants to put one out on the road?
Well, like you said, even there, yeah, then that's county that would regulate that.
Yeah, but what about, like, this other strip mall, the new one, there are Rockstead and Relics, I think, I think, are they gonna?
East Duell is not a county road, so they could technically.
On that side, they could, yeah, right, yeah.
I don't know. With that perspective, I don't know how.
But you gotta remember, even there, it's one landlord, it's not like each one of those spaces, it's not like we can all just do whatever we want with those signs. You know what I mean, it's.
There are properties, though, that we have to keep in mind that are condoed out, where businesses do each own their space, too. So, not that one specifically, but just to keep that in mind for other.
The strip mall behind Mobile, I think, is condoed, yeah, so, so there, I mean, but I don't know, again, how they. Structure that amongst themselves, as far as signings, I mean, they've got, you know, one monument sign, I think, kind of out there that has.
But they could then theoretically each put a sign on whiskey.
Or is it better for us just leave and make an ask for permission?
Property, I wouldn't think necessarily.
I'm not sure, but there's still a business at that location, so.
I think, I think I would say risk averse on this one, and just leave it, and if somebody wants it, they can ask for a variance, just like Dairy Queen did, I don't know, that's. I would hate to see something.
Just to leave things in, nine times out of ten, you're not gonna deny it.
Within reason, right?
Within reason, you're not gonna deny it.
Yeah, I, I don't want to see something where we get in a mess, because, like, the sublease stuff, or who knows? I think it could be a sign pollution issue, I mean, I don't know.
Such thing as sign pollution?
Is there, I don't know.
Actually, there is.
Yeah.
I like signs, I mean, they help.
I do too, unless you're driving and you can't see it around them. Vision triangle issues, yeah.
It's the only problem right there, but otherwise, I like signs.
Alright, well, let's come back to that, so, I'll put strike, maybe.
I want to keep that one, to be honest.
Okay.
Just because if we need to enforce it, we can, I don't know.
Alright, so let's stop there for now, and we'll go on to try to get the rest of this done here, before we have our planning meeting, and we'll come back to the, the rest of this next month, so. Thanks, guys.
Or maybe if planning goes fast?
Uh, maybe.
We might as well use the time.
Maybe. Okay, so we'll go on then now to E three, the Emerald Ashbore discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna talk on behalf of this item for Matt Sylvester. So it was shared at the September nineteenth call meeting, that, um, staff was applying for a grant to hopefully get some funds. That we would be able to do an assessment of what we have, um, for Emerald Ashbore, as we know, it's within the city in different locations. Um, after that meeting, it would, staff was not able to submit the grant in the timeline, given all the other tasks that were going on, so we have not. Put in any, um, application for that grant cycle, we will be looking for future grant cycles, but in reviewing the information. I also wanted to provide council with the, uh, city code ordinance that we have, that does identify pests. Um, within trees as a nuisance within our city, and that they cannot be left alone. Our chapter does outline, and the chapter is included in your packet, the chapter does outline, um, remediation if homeowners don't. Treat the tree, or remove the tree in a manner, um, in a timely fashion. It can be where the city is going to take action and charge the resident, or even assess them for that action. It doesn't really outline what we do with, uh, diseased or tree, pest infected trees within city property. But we would be treated the same as a property owner within the city of having potentially pest ridden trees. So I'm just asking if there's any further direction you'd like staff to look into as we investigate this. Um, I did go on to the Department of Agricultural website to see if there is any requirement through the state. That they require us to make certain actions, and I wasn't be able to find anything on their website. I'll need to do some continued digging to see if there are requirements that they have us to do, or if this is just a city ordinance, and we have the discretion. So I kind of just wanted to let you be aware of this, if you had anything you also want us to have to look into, please let me know, but at this point, kind of an update.
When is the next grant cycle?
There's multiple ones.
Yeah, the next spring, fall, end of summer, I believe, is where. The one that we would like to apply to, when it would likely be available.
Okay. I would like to get on it ASAP, but at, at what cost, you know, does it? Does, do we have, we don't have any idea how many infected trees we have, or none of that yet, okay?
I mean, I don't have a problem pursuing the grant next time it comes around to, to see if we can get money to, you know. If we, if we want to take a look at it, but I, I, I mean, the cost associated with getting rid of them anyway, though, was a lot, you know what I mean? I mean, so I think even if you knew how many there were, I mean, yeah, there might be some situations in some of the parks where you'd say, yeah, we maybe need to treat them, but.
Yeah, I mean, are there any important trees that are in any of the, like staple trees in these parks that need to be treated ASAP? I mean, another year, you could have, in a, in a year, you could lose all your trees, they're, they're vicious, I mean. Yeah, we lost one in six months, gone, so, I mean, are there any staple trees in any of those parks? Not like, I know last time we were talking about the heavily wooded parks, where you don't, you don't worry about those?
No.
And obviously, you don't want them to spread, but like, say in Mattson Park, if you lost trees there, that's a bigger deal.
Yeah, right.
Are there any, I mean, I would like to get, before next year, I would like to look at, are there any trees that can be treated, I mean, what was it, three hundred bucks a tree, or something to treat it? Or was it less than that?
So much per, no, that was for them to go out and do the study, was so much per day.
Right.
Can't remember, the treatment was.
I mean, I don't think we even need.
Depending on the diameter and it.
I don't, we don't even need a study, I mean, anybody in public works, if you look at a tree, you can see it's, I mean, right now, it'd be harder, because it's falling leaves. Yeah, just have public works take a look at it. Yeah, just have public works take a look at it, you know, I mean, they probably know which trees, I mean, I got a bunch of trees in my yard and I know which ones are, you know?
Yeah.
And like you said, look, just the staple trees, the ones that are in the major parks and the main areas that
Yeah, and then.
there's just one or two, and if they are in ash, you know, identify them.
Get them treated.
And treat it if we need to.
Yeah, I think it's.
We don't have to treat it until, is it better to treat before or after, or?
I think it's, it's early detection, I think, so when it starts at the canopy of it, is quick detection, or that you know that it's been invaded, so to say, and then you take action right away.
I would think Matt would have looked around and he might, he might have seen something, right now, it's really hard to tell without the leaves, I mean, you, you can see the bark, you can tell by the bark too, and he looked for a D shaped hole in the tree, but.
He has seen some canopies dying, which is a telltale sign of that, but he is recommending that we actually have some come out and assess it, because some of these grant opportunities want to know what, like, what's the impact to your city, what's the percentage, and we do have a, kind of a good guesstimate from back when we were doing the Green Steps program, cause we had to look at our canopy within the city and identify majority, you know, not majority of our tree species. That might be enough, but it, it's a very generalized kind of categorical.
Okay, I would like to have Matt look into that, cause there's, once you lose more than thirty percent of the canopy or the tree, you can't save it. So it's, I think, I don't think we can wait another six months or a year, personally.
So we gotta wait till the leaves come out, so we'll wait till spring, I think we should revisit it as a whole, maybe at that time, we'll see if there's any new grant opportunities that have come out, because it's getting worse, right, as it's coming more and more to our area. But then also, again, revisit our city code chapter, because if it's saying.
That's what I was gonna say, is as far as the language that you brought up here, I think I'd get rid of that completely and just, cause we're, we're not gonna go on somebody's property and remove their tree for them and then charge them for it, I mean, if they got a dead tree, it's their problem, and, and, and I don't want to be forced to remove all the dead trees in these heavily wooded parks that we have down by the river either.
The only problem is this stuff's gonna spread, and it's, I mean.
It's gonna spread no ma- it's, they've been trying to stop it from getting here.
Yeah.
And it's here, so, it's spreading no matter what.
So we'll do some research to see if there's anything with the Department of Ag that's having any requirements, look at possible revisions, revision, revisions to this chapter, and then bring it back to Cal at a future meeting here.
That sounds good. Alright, moving on to E four, budget work session discussion.
Alright, thank you, Mayor and Council, so we currently don't have any, um, budget work sessions scheduled between now and when we would like to do a final budget and our truth and taxation meeting on December fifth. So staff would like to know if there's direction from council, if we want to schedule them along with having our other meetings on regular meeting nights, if you want different meeting nights, how many do you want?
I was thinking November twenty-first, maybe just make that after the council meeting and if that works for, for everybody, but, uh, cause that way, cause our, November eighth, we'll have the, the new council member appointed, right, so, we want to give them maybe a little bit of time to get acquainted with the budget and so they can at least contribute to the conversation. And then we'll have that final, uh, meeting on December fifth, right, Mike? Yeah.
Is there any way, I don't, I don't like the budget meetings at the end of the night, I think people get tired, I would rather, I think it's more important than Cal. Would it be possible to have, even just.
Budget to five and Cal to, to follow?
Yeah, it might be, might be better, cause the budget is way more important than this general stuff we talk about.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, if, if that are right with you.
I mean, it's harder for you guys to make it that early.
Right, that's the only thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Or do we want to do it on, I suppose the aces, yeah, that would kind of be out, and then we have to set it by the fifth of December?
That one's already scheduled, that'll, that one, that will actually be where it is to approve the budget.
Actually have till the end of the year, but, right, I mean, you could technically do it the last meeting of the year too, but.
Yeah, I have to certify with the county by the end of, I think it's December twenty-seventh or December twenty-eighth.
Nice to have it earlier in the month though.
Yeah, pretty much everybody, and that would be my advice as well, is to try to set that final budget at the first meeting, so that if there is a problem, if three people get in the same car accident and all of a sudden we can't do it, we still have another meeting that we can address those things, that's why you do it at the first meeting is, so.
Yeah, and I don't think we have to have a special meeting day for that.
Yeah.
I mean, George, is it a problem you making here by five if you know this far ahead of time, or is it, it's so unpredictable probably with your job?
It is, it is, I mean, I've made everyone up until today.
Yeah.
Um, but it is unpredictable.
Would you rather have it, would you rather have it at the end?
Well, there would already be committee of the whole at five P M.
Yeah, but that's not that important to, I mean, if you miss that, it's not like the budget, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if we could put it towards the center, gives, gives me a little bit more, gives me fifteen.
Maybe instead of, maybe we move planning commission after.
So planning commission perhaps at five P M? And then budget at six, council at seven?
I'd do that. Sorry with you.
Hey, it's this time of year, man, I may not be here, I may not even make it to the meeting, it's heating these days.
That fall sucks, yeah.
And when somebody doesn't have heat, I might be there till ten o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, that's gonna take presidents.
Mm-hmm.
So let's go planning at five, budget at six, and council at seven, Cal at seven thirty-ish, or whenever council is over.
And Mr. Becker will be sending out, um.
I'd get here by five, yeah.
Closer when it gets to that meeting, he'll be sending out budget documents that have all, any changes, everything from where after that preliminary discussion, there were some things to change, um, that was shared there, so he'll have all those final documents sent out before that.
Okay. That sounds good, uh, moving on to E five, small cities development program funding.
Um, good evening, um, this is, I just wanted to, um, just inform you about staff's discussion on the Small Cities Development Program funding and just kind of make you aware of what will be coming to council eventually, so that you're not shocked, because we do have to call out a certain area of the city as slum and blight um, for the purposes of this grant, so, um, that can be a hard thing to do. Um, but if you really look at the guidelines, it's, um, talking about, um, just looking at twenty-five percent of the buildings being deteriorated or deteriorating and having at least, um, one of the following characteristics, which is physical deterior- deterioration, um, abandonment, chronic high turnover or vacancy rate, significant decline in property value, or just low property value compared to the other areas. Um, specifically, we're looking at the downtown area, um, and certain commercial areas within this district within the city, and it really allows us to apply for funding to help out homeowners and businesses to receive funds to help with their facades, with furnaces, with roofs, and it doesn't require the city to have any matching funds. Um, basically, um, those who qualify, which is under the LMI, um, qualification, which is a higher income bracket, um, for lower, low to moderate income, which I think for certain families is up to eighty-five thousand dollars um, a year of income, so they can, um, qualify for seventy percent of their furnace being fixed, or their roof being fixed, or certain repairs to their homes to keep the housing stock within the city viable, um, for those who maybe have lived in their home for fifty years and are ready to sell it to a younger family, um, just as one example.
I have a question for you, Stephanie.
Yes.
If you, let's say we take Main Street, for example, and call it that, but somebody lives over off of whiskey and those elderly people behind were that mobile.
Yes.
Across the mobile, can we divert some of that funds to those people?
So we have to, because we're a city larger than five thousand, designate a specific area within the city. It doesn't have to be just one street, so we as city staff are looking at.
Wouldn't that sort of be like discrimination though? I mean, you're picking a neighborhood that you're saying is blightful, and I, personally, I'm not one for free handouts, I don't think, I think people should, I mean, if you, if you keep giving stuff for free, people have an incentive not to do anything, and I don't think that's what we want to promote, and I'll, I don't know, if, if my neighborhood is picked as blightful, I would think it's kind of an insult. So I don't know if it's a great idea, to be honest.
This funding is funding from the federal government, and so, basically, we have to have a housing component, it can be homeownership, homes that people own, or rental properties as well. So it helps just keep them up to, up to, um, livable standards for them to help sell their homes, and basically, they get seven, they can get up to seventy percent of, up to twenty-five thousand dollars um, only for repairs, and it's only for people who can qualify under the LMI for their household. Um, but basically, we are looking at doing this blue and purple district um, as well as some on heritage here for the commercial side. And so for the commercial side, it does help with up to forty thousand dollars for businesses to get eighty percent of the cost for, to improve the outside of their buildings, um, to maintain them as well. And so, if we're not applying for it, other cities definitely are, so we always have to think of it that way. Um, it also allows us to apply for a streetscape, up to six hundred thousand dollars for the grant without any match. So we would look at those areas and then we could improve some of the sidewalk projects that maybe we had planned for in the future as well as add seating to areas and.
I'd be okay with that, because that spreads it to everybody, it's not just one household or one area, which is, the streetscape stuff sounds fine, but I think discriminating and picking a neighborhood is a bad idea.
We cannot apply for the streetscape part without having a housing component to it, so it's really trying to spread the housing, um, it's, it's really trying to help maintain houses within our community so that they are when people move out of them, um, or age out of them, which is really what we're seeing and what you see in a lot of neighborhoods that are older, is that older folks can afford to fix their furnace and their, like, the likelihood is that a young family is gonna be buying their home because they've lived there for sixty years, so that's the affordable homes now. And instead of investing in affordable housing through TIF or other actions, this is our best way to maintain the housing stock and keep our affordable housing in good condition, I guess, for the next generation.
When, when is the deadline for application?
So the first, the, it's a two part, well, it's a many part application, but the first, um, I forget what it's called.
Well, here, let's, why don't we do this, let's, let's, do we want to maybe just recess this and come back to it after planning, cause the planning's pretty short and,
Yeah.
um, so we can get, get the planning done here for the folks that are waiting and.
Motion to recess.
Okay. I have a motion to recess from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move on to the planning commission meeting.